I'd like to call the April 8th meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nikosje?
Here.
All present.
All right, will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, uh, the Imocation Pledge of Allegiance? Heavenly Father, we gather tonight to conduct the business of the county. We're at the time of budget season for the county. Let us be good steward of all the citizens' money and use the funds to the best of all the citizens of the county. For it's in your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is we'd like to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is citizen comment period. If you're here early and want to run up here real quick, come on up. You've got three minutes. State your name and magisterial district or the organization you're with.
Good evening Gloucester County Board of Supervisors and County Administrator Steele. I am Julie Northcott Wilson, representing Bay Aging, the Area Agency on Aging, and Community Action Agency, serving Virginia's middle peninsula and northern neck. I want to begin by thanking you for your tremendous support of Bay Aging Services in Gloucester County. I also want to recognize Bay Aging's board members from Gloucester, Vice Chair Dr. Barry Gross, and Ron Saunders, who have served on our board with distinction for many years. For fiscal year 2025, we are requesting a 3% increase in funding for our aging services over FY 2024 levels. Aging services include meals, home care hours, information and education, caregiver support, housing, and other programs to help citizens of all ages live independently in their communities. The increase will help Bay Aging offset rising personnel costs related to our services. Our request of $16,073 for aging services does not stand on its own, but rather enables Bay Aging to draw down the much larger state and federal resources for these programs. The impact sheet I distributed shows the effect of this leveraging and illustrates the value that 5,285 county residents received last year from Bay Aging. For our Housing Choice voucher program in Gloucester County, we are also requesting a 3% increase to $24,922. These funds also leverage federal and state dollars. Last year, 180 Gloucester residents were safely housed courtesy of HCVP. I'd like to note that during fiscal year 2023, Bay Aging paid more than $92,000 in taxes and municipal fees to Gloucester County. My colleagues Pat Sanders and Claudia Pratt will discuss Bay Aging's transit division. Thank you for your long partnership and continued support. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I brought Claudia here to answer any of your questions about Bay Transit. She is the regional supervisor. She's the one that keeps the, keeps the tires on the road and keeps everything flowing smoothly down here. I am Pat Sanders. I'm the operations manager for Bay Transit, and I do appreciate the opportunity to present to you all tonight on behalf of Bay Transit. First and foremost, I'd like to thank each of you all for 24 years of support for Bay Transit. It's been a, been a long time. I've been here 20 years, almost 24 years myself, so we've seen the transportation grow in all the counties, but Gloucester has, has always stepped up to the plate, supported us, and it's greatly appreciated. We operate two services, transportation services in Gloucester County. We have three demand response buses. They run 12 hours a day, Monday through Friday. The buses provide door-to-door service, which is supposed to be curb-to-curb, but you don't see a lot of curbs there here in these country roads, so it's usually door-to-door when we go to their homes. And riders must schedule a ride 24 hours in advance. The other service that we provide is the Transit Express. We have three Transit Express buses that operate nine hours, Monday through Friday, via booking app. And if you're familiar with Lyft or Uber transportation, that's how that service works. It has been very, very successful. In fact, we cannot meet the demand for the service. This service has been growing rapidly in the past year and now serves more than 1,800 passengers just through that transportation a month. We provided over 38,000 rides in Gloucester County last year. Nearly 18,000 were through the Bay Transit Express service, and 20,000 were the demand response. The total ridership was up in fiscal year '23 by 9.7% over the previous year. We've already seen, to this date, we've already seen an increase in the ridership in Gloucester County of eight and a half percent to the same date last year. We have another program. It's called the New Freedom Program, and this offers rides to seniors and people with disabilities to destinations outside of the, of the counties or outside of the Bay Transit, the 12-county service area. That, and they do not, they cannot qualify for Medicaid transportation. This transportation is for those, we see a lot of Medicaid transportation, but these, the people we serve do not qualify for Medicaid. And it's become, it's very, very successful, and it really is difficult to meet all the demand. We offer rides to hospitals, to, we do a lot of VA, you know, VA hospitals in Hampton, trips to, into Richmond also, to doctor's appointments. We even, we could tell lots of stories about somebody, someone that needed a ride to church for a special event on a Sunday. You know, if someone's having a family reunion and the family member, they have no way to get the person, you know, into a car and get them to this, to the, to the event. And this is where we come in to help with this type of thing. So it's for seniors or those with disabilities, and it is very successful. This past year, we provided 562 new freedom rides to Gloucester residents. Our transit service has a huge impact on the economic development, as you all well know. When we can provide people with rides for any reason, and they go out and they do shopping, over 50% of our ridership is to work. So think about that, all those people that would not have transportation if it wasn't for the service that we provide. And we also, it, it helps improve their quality of life.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up. Could you summarize?
I will summarize.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the things that I will summarize real quickly is that we want to, I want to make sure that, and I didn't, I didn't realize it was three minutes before I got here, but anyway, is that we offer, we offer people the opportunity to remain independent and, and on their own as long as possible. So to wrap up, we are asking a 3% increase over our budget last year, and this is basically due to the cost of, for hiring people and trying to be competitive in the workforce these days. It's, it's really, really, it's tough to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Cronin, do we have any? Anyone else like to speak? All right. We'll close the citizen comment period. We'll move to the work session, agenda, budget discussion. Steel?
Ms. Callaway is going to go through a few of the changes that we've been making for the last couple of weeks, and then we're prepared with a program on the screen and on your computers to go through and look at different line items or however you would like to proceed. So she's got a couple handouts, and if you could, go ahead and take over.
All righty. So I've provided two handouts for everybody. The first is actually just a slide correction. Mr. Crisco noted a slight discrepancy in the wording of a slide. It was slide number 11 in our budget presentation. The, it, it does not have any actual budgetary impact. It was in the wording of the slide. So at the very bottom, you'll see I crossed out $229,000 and put in 223866. So what that number is, is the net cost to the county of the new positions that are included in the proposed budget minus, including any revenue we will get for cost sharing of the social services fraud investigator. So that was just a correction. And we will update the, that presentation online as well for citizens. The second handout is a listing of all of the current changes in our budget as of right now. So we recently received information from our health insurance consultant that our health insurance increase is not as, expected to be as high as, as it was initially anticipated. So we're looking at an 8% increase in health insurance costs, which, and it was originally proposed at 12%. So that actually, what these, the negatives basically mean that the, we had a reduction or a positive in our budget, and then the increases are positive numbers. So I'll try to, it's a little difficult to show that here, but that gave us an additional 107 in our budget. Next, we had some corrections that we had to make for personnel and what my staff and I were doing over the last couple of weeks. We just went back through, you know, the changing personnel, and we had a couple of corrections with positions that we had missed, that we needed to add into the budget. So you'll, we'll note those a little bit later, but we did act, adjust for their, that COLA, that was, so there's a $4,000 increase in COLA costs. Then we removed the proposed board salary increase, and that was based on the legal opinion that it was not able to be done this fiscal year. So $2,264 reduction. $600, we mentioned previously, increase in case management software for the Commonwealth Attorney that we just were, received notification from the vendor. This, that's, this next one, the $68,000, that was the first of a personnel change that we discovered in just a new, another round of cross-checking. So 68,000 in, in personnel updates there. Health Department and Library, we just received the updated reconciliation for the common area maintenance, which has increased quite a bit. So we're working on some additional research on that, but we're estimating $4,800 in additional common area maintenance for the Health Department and $12,245 in additional maintenance on the Library. The next is a, a library position adjustment there that we, correction that we needed to make. And then we've discussed previously that the increase in our veterans credits have continued to go up. So I worked with the commissioner, and we estimated that we need to account for a reduction in revenue of $171,000 to account for what our estimate is of those increasing credits. Next, we did another extensive review of personnel specifically in social services to make sure that our calculations and our position counts were correct, and that actually resulted in a reduction of $34,000 for the local transfer that would offset some of those costs. And then finally, we did receive state compensation board revenue estimates, so that gave us some additional revenue of $183,000 in the budget. Overall, the net impact of these changes is a positive $2,287. What's that? Ate it right up? I know. I am sorry. I, nobody was more disappointed than us when we, as we worked through those changes, but, but I'm, we're happy to answer questions.
And Maria has got the figures, if she could share with you just a couple examples of, while we're very pleased with the healthcare cost, it does have an impact on people's COLA, and it really depends upon which program that they choose, but we're, we're, I had, if we'd had more, say-
$127 annually, and then it goes up to, it would be about $588 for the year for the family plan. So that's the range for that plan. The HSA plan, high deductible, there's no cost to the employee for the employee-only plan, and then the highest plan would result in an employee increase of $206 annually. To give you a perspective, I looked at the total, I pulled non-director general fund personnel to get an average salary, and that was $55,077 annually. So if we were to adopt a 3.2% COLA, that would be a $1,700 increase, and then $588 if they were on the highest plan we offer would go towards that health insurance cost. So that would be about 33% of their increase in the worst-case scenario. I have other, lots more numbers, but that's what-
To the changes sheet? So did we miss two people in community engagement?
Not two people in community engagement. We missed one person there and one person in the Library. We did miss two people. And one was a result of their, so both of them were positions that had been vacated, and then they were being used, part-time people were being used. And so that full-time position got a little lost in the, in the, in the water, I guess. And so in this review, because the way that I did it originally, we didn't have an HR Director at that time, so I was really pulling that together, and we're working on, with the HR Director, perfecting this process, because it is a very arduous process, but those two departments specifically have lots of part-time people that rotate. And so that was an error on our part.
Mr. Gibson?
Ms. Callaway, on the community engagement, where, where do those employees work? Are these the employees who are at the schools?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and prepare the newsletters, the, okay. And then, I didn't catch one of your numbers. You said on the health insurance for the family plan, for the, the plan that's not the high deductible, did you say the increase would be 578?
588 annually.
For the whole year for the family?
Correct.
Wow.
That's the increase.
I'm sorry, yes, these are the increases. These are not the total cost.
Ah, oh, okay.
So in looking at a 3.2 raise, and then coming out of that raise is the increase of the insurance to the net, you know, for the employee?
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Which we're very happy that it's not 12%. It couldn't be worse.
Dr. Orth?
With regard to the veterans' benefits, these are numbers in addition to the $700,000 that you had at our last presentation. And these are estimated costs between now and June, or?
The way that I calculated that was based off of the most recent vet number of credit applications that the commissioner had received as of earlier in March.
Now, if we get additional requests passed at the beginning of the fiscal year, which we don't know, we would have to watch those numbers very carefully, because that reduces our revenue over the course of the next fiscal year, which we don't know.
Yes, sir.
And shouldn't that number be negative?
So the, it's resulting in an increase in the net budget. So we're going the wrong way. So I can show you on the BOSS work doc, if that's helpful.
Amen.
But it, it-
It is an increase.
It's a negative in revenue.
Right.
Right.
It's one of those things where accounting says everything backwards, but we think logically.
It is. Well, it's very difficult to put negative revenues and negative and positive expenses all in the same list. So maybe next time I separate those two lists.
I also neglected to mention, I just wanted to state that we have not heard any update unless anybody else knows anything from the governor. So unfortunately, we have no additional news on what the schools' funding will be or any other changes.
Mr. Smith?
I may have missed this somewhere along the line, but the veterans, do they have to have a certain amount of income, or they just automatically?
It's automatic if they are full dis, if they prove their full disability.
Their full disability, okay.
It's 100%. Would you like us to pull up the spreadsheet?
Mr. Chairman, can I make one little comment? When we started the meeting tonight, we were live on the peg channels, but we had a little bit of an issue with the streaming, but that's been fixed. So they may have missed the first part of the meeting, but we'll be able to replay that tomorrow.
All right. I can just run through this really quick. It's, you're going to see the same numbers that are on this listing. So at the top is the revenue, so there's the negative 171,000 for the veterans' credit, the additional 183 for the state revenue. So the net impact to the revenue was an increase of $11,000. And then on the expenditure side, the reduction for the board raise, increase for the Commonwealth Attorney software, increase for the common area maintenance here in the Health Department, the one position. This is a position and the common area maintenance increase on the lease, so that's both things in that department. This is the adjustment for the potential COLA. Oh, and this one was, so the 2,287, we were coming up with an option to balance. This is just a suggestion. We, we balanced it with reducing the vacancy savings. Of course, that is just an option. Finally- Yes, sir, at the bottom. And then the health insurance updates were a reduction of $107,000 in expenses, and then here is the $34,000 reduction in the transfer to social services. So all of that balances the budget back to zero.
Mr. Bizani?
So I'll reiterate my objection to a fraud investigator for social services, because we get no benefit out of that as accounting. I don't think the social service should be like a mini police force, watching to make sure that one, no one's cheating the, cheating the government of any kind of benefits they may get. We could probably, we could probably use that savings and use it for Bay Aging to provide them, to help them with, I know we've given them an increase this year, but for me, I don't see the necessary, the necessity for a fraud investigator where Gloucester County will not benefit from that. So that, that's my two cents worth. That's all I'll say.
Mr. Smith?
Did, was Bay Aging, did they get an increase in their budget this year? What was, did, did they increase?
It was a small, so Bay Aging, as they mentioned, there were, there are three different places we fund them for the Bay Transit. We gave them a 3% increase of $5,817. We did not increase their, what is that one for? The home and community services, that's, so they asked for $16,073, and we funded $15,150. And then finally, the Housing Choice voucher program, we did fund an increase of $922, which was what they requested.
The 3%, but we didn't, we don't, the aging home, the home meal, that's the home meal.
The home and community services.
If you wanted to go up, that is one area that, with the vacancy savings challenge, and you've got 2,287 to play with as a start, and if you wanted to go to their 3%.
Gentlemen, if we decide not to do the fraud investigator, where would you want to put the additional money to another department that might need it more?
I think the decision needs to be made if we, as a group, want to get rid of the fraud.
That's what I'm saying.
What is-
We would make that decision, right, Mr. Chair, if we know where the target recipient will be from the savings.
I mean, we need to figure out if people want to get rid of the fraud person first, decide if we want to even move it somewhere else.
Like I said, I don't see the benefit to the county.
But this is being cost share, right, with Matthews and Middlesex, right? And that's what would be an issue, is if they agree to do it, then we're putting them in a bind. Because this, our, our amount comes to about, what, 40,000?
Correct.
Yeah. So if, if our cost is 40, where's the 80 come from?
Our cost is 40. Our cost is 40. That's why this sheet's been updated.
Okay.
Our cost is 40, and then Matthews and Middlesex-
Okay, then I stand corrected.
The total cost is 80,000, but we're getting reimbursed 40.
I stand corrected.
Actually, you said corrective right now.
I said corrective.
Maria reminded me that with Bay Transit, while we did give them a 3%, they actually asked for more than that, but we did increase by the 3%.
Tonight, they were asking for 3%, so they've gotten 3% for everything except the aging services. What would have been the increase of the amount for the aging services?
Very small. Let me, 16073, if their, if, if their math is correct. That's exactly what they asked.
That's a, that's a good program, because I've seen them, you know, they'll, that's a very good program.
I believe it's 923 more dollars.
Yeah, they, they, they start shoveling people around 5:00 AM in the morning.
They're rolling.
Yeah, they're rolling. I got a question about the overall budget for this year.
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Do we want to move, do we want to give them the extra $900?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I thought we had 2,287 extra. Did we already spend a portion of that?
900.
Oh, 900 of that?
Right.
Yes, okay.
That leaves you with 1,364 within this.
Okay, now, Dr. Orth.
Okay, this has to do with this current year's budget. So we're at the end of the third quarter, correct? And do we, I think you said that we would be looking at a significant savings or increase in budget of X thousand dollars. Do you know what that will be going into next fiscal year? Because I think we've used those monies for Pago, correct? Or we've tried to do that for Pago?
Are you talking about the overall budget compared to the overall budget now? So-
Well, right. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at-
Revenue to expenses.
The revenue that might be available next year that we could look at, whether that's going to impact what we could do this year or not, but I know that we had several thousand dollars.
Okay, so for the carryover, yes, that vacancy savings, right. So-
So-
We don't know how much people are going to spend within their budget. That's one thing. We always have some leftover, but the vacancy savings.
But we will know, for example, sales tax and meals tax until August, correct? Because that's always a two-month delay. And I'm just, yeah, because I'm thinking, I'm looking also at what the schools, we have to reduce the school budget, not, but, well, we reduced our CIP request from, to about 450,000 for buses, right? So they're not getting all that they want for the buses, correct?
Correct.
And then they're a million and a half short from what they requested, because we level-funded them, correct?
Correct. However, if House Bill 30 passes, in the, the amount of House Bill 30 goes through, they should be whole. There was a lot of discussion at the joint meeting. We were trying to figure out, because I had them, that they were going to be whole, but at that meeting, it sounded like there was going to still be the $600,000 deficit. And when we spoke with their finance director, the reason there was, it was, at that point, they had a, an advised amount, guesstimate, that was from the Virginia Association of Superintendents, and so they were using that figure. And then since that time, their, what they call their calc figure has come out, which is the House Bill 30. So if the governor passes what was proposed for education, they should have. So I would be very cautious about projecting any higher than we have. As far as the vacancy savings that may be brought forward that we'll know about early fall, late summer, I think, you know, whatever has gone to fund balance, that has helped us do the CIP for the following year. So I don't.
So what you're saying, what the carryover that we had from last year is being used to help us do PEGO and things like that, correct?
Right, and so it would be very poor budgeting to guess we're going to have leftover money and plan on spending it for operational costs, first of all. But even if it was capital improvement, I mean, if the board wanted to prioritize and say, these are things that we cannot pass right now, that we would like to see happen, and we'll come back once those figures are in. And what that essentially would do is if the board chose to do some funding at that time and appropriate, it might be what you'd, you know, think of as pulling forward a CIP project or doing something else. But I would recommend that you wait until you have the money in hand before doing any other of those kinds of adjustments.
No, I agree, I'm just kind of thinking out loud about.
Hopefully, it'll be a positive situation.
Right, and, you know, given my text to you about this weekend's.
We appreciate your wife's support and the amount of sales tax that you spent.
Yes, right, no, I agree. I'm just kind of thinking out loud and walking through some things that I know, you know, we put on the back burner from the CIP and the capital projects. And that, I don't know if the board wants to deal with possibly identifying projects. So I think, let's look at the budget for this year and worry about the objects that we want to do for later on.
So the other issue that I had was with the Commissioner of Revenue. When I was asking her questions, that a typical board of directors would ask anyone if they wanted an increase in their, in their funding. I think she came unprepared to defend the additional person. But I'm going to stay with what she had. Hopefully, it'll be worth it. But she did not come prepared to defend her number. And so, it's a lot of money, they're $84,000. But I just wanted to make that comment. And for the next time, Ms. Steele.
If, if I can.
We need empirical data or some kind of proof to, you know, defend their number if they're going to come ask us for more money.
And, and again, I would like to take the fall on that because she specifically asked if she should prepare a PowerPoint, and I said no. As none of them prepared PowerPoints for you all, and it was in line. I knew the sheriff wasn't going to be doing one, and Social Services. It was what I thought was going to be a discussion. And, and I will also say, I think she had very good information, and it was difficult under the Q and A that was occurring for her to present what she wanted to. And she has, a lot of people have made comments about the meeting that night. And I think if it was a do-over, you would hear, you could hear a much more succinct, because I have no doubt that that position is absolutely essential to us generating the revenue that we need to generate. And, and again, she would have had a PowerPoint if I'd have said bring it.
But this gets to a point, I think, with Mr. Bazzani. It might be good for the board, for the future, to think about what type of information we want from these different departments that would help us in their preparation so that they don't spin a lot of wheels. So there are things that we want to see that has to do with, you know, changes in their budget or changes in how they appropriate funds. It might be really good to have that as part of that package that we've talked about that are, you know, good for us and good for the community to see that, you know, we're not spending taxpayer money unwisely. Because I can certainly sense from her presentation, you know, her need, and I think it will pay off immensely, if not more than what we've budgeted for a particular position. But I think, you know, Mr. Bazzani is correct in that mode, that we have good information, graphics, you know, like we see from, you know, Mrs. Calloway, when we did the fund balance and the thing. That was a really good way of presenting how we see our fund balance change over time versus our revenue. I think that those types of things are really good for us, as well as for the public who wants to follow what we do with our budget, who may not understand some of the things that we deal with on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along these same lines, I think that one of the most helpful things that I've been involved with on the board that was helpful for me, understanding county departments, was the tour that we took all day through various county facilities. And I'm just putting this out there for discussion. But, you know, perhaps over the course of the next year, before the next budget session, there could be some times where groups of two could go to various departments and just kind of get a quick overview. We don't want to take a lot of time from the departments or detract from their work. But it's one thing to hear the Commissioner talk about her work, but it would be another thing to actually go to her office, talk with the employees, see what's happening firsthand. That could really help us with budgeting in the future, so. And we could do that with departments all throughout the county. And I think the county employees would appreciate us having a better understanding of what they're doing on a daily basis. So that's just a thought that occurred to me as we're talking about the budget.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I totally agree. And I think that the departments would welcome your, you know, attendance. And it's same as the school board encouraging or being encouraged to go out to visit schools. And it made me think of, I had started a note and didn't, just kind of thought, well, we were supposed to wait until, we're going to wait until after the budget process. But a reminder that we didn't do the CIP tour. But I think having a facilities tour, that we mentioned maybe going to the PAA site, even though some of you all have been, a lot of you have not been. The page site, I think touring Building 4. I think also touring some of the historical buildings that we're putting in new attractions. And even RCC, I don't know how long it's been since people have been to RCC, since it's had changes. So there may be other sites that, to sort of understand community and partnership, as well as what we're doing construction-wise.
Can you scroll on the worksheet down to where we can see the fire and rescue numbers? 5.701, what goes into that number? That 5,701,724? Because it's different than what's presented on page 47 of our presentation.
There's state grant money that she'll explain that goes into there, too, that they receive annually each department.
Yeah, I can tell you the individuals, and then if you want specific numbers, I have them here. Just got to dig a little bit. So Ms. Steele is right, we have first the two Gloucester and Abingdon contributions. And then this year, that also includes utilities and electrical services for Abingdon and Gloucester. And then we have two different grants. One is called Aid to Localities, and that is for fire training. And then the last is called For for Life, and that is a state grant through the Virginia Department of Health for EMS.
That's making up the other 366, some thousand dollars that isn't local transfer.
Correct, so the way those work is the county is the fiscal agent for those two grants. We receive the money and we pay it out to them in two checks.
Can you go to the bottom of the sheet? What are we using for fund balance to balance operating?
Oh, that is actually at the top.
Says zero. The 41, 746.
Yeah, 746, 984.
What are we, what is that amount paying for, for operating? For using that much?
No, that is not restricted, that is, let me pull the exact here for you. 500 of that is the carryover from the radio payment. So we're using $500,000 for, that we assign for county administrator contingency. And then, let's see. I know it was, I don't have that off the bat. I might have to give that, those details to you. But I know we, I said assigned, that's not part of assigned. It's the radio payment and then the 278 that we had to use to balance the budget. Two hundred some odd thousand that we used to balance the budget. Let me pull this for you. It's a 278, am I, 246?
246, 247.
Sorry about that. It was the 270-ish, and then the 500 for the radio payment. That's what those two are, so that is not.
Is it 270 or 247?
247, I'm sorry, transposing numbers in my head. Correct, the 275 for the, that is in revenue, that is not part of fund balance because we deferred it. So we'll recognize that as other income this year.
What does that leave our fund balance percentage-wise going into next fiscal year?
It is, we, a small amount left.
Above the 16%?
Yes, we did not go past 16%. Correct.
Now, we're at 16. I think we're keeping it at 16, but there's a little bit above 16.
Let's see, the fund balance number.
I know Mr. Crisco made a comment that if we had a disaster for the HVAC for Body Top, we could dip into that if we had to.
So there is a new grant that is for HVAC, that is a federal grant that our new grant writer from the PDC is working on. And we have provided a copy of all five years' worth of needs for HVAC. I don't know that we are going to get it, but they, I think it had to have 10 different purchases or 10 different facilities. And what they do is, they sort of get you on the hook with a smaller amount and looking at planning and things. And then you can qualify for a different, a second round of grants. So not to say that you might not, you know, you may want to go that route or you may want to earmark if we don't get this grant by such and such date. Or if it, obviously, I know you don't want to wait until it fails because it takes too long to get the equipment.
So do the grants come from the infrastructure bill passed by the Congress?
That's, most of them are right now, and this is one of the reasons why we hired this person.
And they've only spent about 25% of that so far. And so why can't our representatives, Mr. Hodges or, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitman, represent us and say, look, you know, we have some infrastructure in our county we need to get fixed?
So the funds were all divvied up between different federal departments. So this, you know, there's Department of Energy, there's Department of, you know, the EPA and.
But they haven't spent any other, hardly.
Most of them have, and that bill was like that big or whatever. And it had specific ways that things have to be done. The, the energy grant that we just applied for, or that we're a coattail on for the Hampton Roads, PDC is an example. It has to meet this criteria. And unfortunately, a lot of times, we don't meet it. And if you, even as much money as there is in the infrastructure, if you looked at everybody's needs and stuff, it would be way more than that, so they set certain parameters. I'm very hopeful that we are going to start seeing some money roll in now with having a person dedicated to go out and get specifically that money. I'll also say that this is the first time that our area has ever applied for earmark money with the two senators. Our congressman understandably will not apply for it. But we have put in an application to our senators that would help with the generators for emergency centers, you know, for emergency services, and also for the dredging project, to help that get further along. So we'll, we'll see. She's very active, it's great to have a full-time employee doing that.
So Ms. Callaway, roughly, how much county administrator contingency fund have we spent this year?
Much of it, I can find that number for you.
Almost all.
And I also wanted to provide, I was just looking at, confirming the numbers Mr. Crisco was asking for. So that 500, however you want to split it, it does include the CA contingency. That's what I would consider part of the operating. So the 500,000 and then the 246, 984 is what we use for operating.
The 500,000, though, would not be a continuous. We're not going to give the county administrator $500,000 annually.
Correct.
So that would be a one-time bump there.
We, we assign that as a part of the contingency, and we hope we don't use it, so it stays.
But it's showing up here as an operating expense, correct, or am I incorrect?
Generally, that's available to, for.
Correct, but it wouldn't be an ongoing expense. Meaning it could be $500,000 one year, $100,000 the next year. And it should all come from unassigned fund balance and not be an annually recurring half a million dollar charge.
So that's the revenue if I don't spend any, correct?
That is just the funding source of the contingency.
Okay.
So we can separate that instead of calling it fund balance operating and put a third line that says contingency, assigned for contingency.
But, but. Where the money is coming from, that 500,000 is not going to create a hole in our next year's budget, is what I'm saying.
Theoretically.
But what I'm looking at here is looking like it's going to cause a half a million dollar hole to start the budget with next year. That's what I'm saying.
If we leave it at the 500,000, it would.
No, no, that's the point. It's, it's, I give her 500,000. It's done, that's it. Next year, that 500,000 doesn't necessarily occur unless she spends all 500,000.
Exactly, unless we change it from the 500,000, it's recurring.
No, it's not, it's not. Because we're not going to automatically give 500,000 every year.
It has been in the budget annually.
But that 500,000, as it sits this year, if she only spends 100,000, she doesn't have 400,000 next year. Leftover.
Right, because it all goes back to, so you start, you budget for it every year, but you hope it's on your revenue side, so it balances.
But the money we're using this year for is for the radio lease that we're not having to pay for this year, correct?
Then, we have used, we have used that money in the fund balance theoretically for capital.
So to fill that hole, if all things were considered and we left the fund, the county administrators contingency fund at 500,000, then there would be a hole.
And the hope is that that hole gets replenished annually because we're not using that money. So the hope is that we don't use that, so it doesn't actually get, that's why we call it assigned.
So in the balancing at the end of the year, when we get into all those final figures, one of the things that we do is pay the contingency back. And that's why it's budgeted for annually. So when we would come to you and say, we have this amount of money left over in fund balance that is after all the expenses, it's because we made, anything that was spent was balanced out. And I'm not saying there's not 10 other ways to do it, but I just know it has been budgeted for annually, like it's a new expense annually. But it's not necessarily any of it being spent.
What's the average amount of, and you probably don't have this tonight, county administrator contingency fund that's been spent the last 10 years?
I don't have 10, but I know in the last several, we have used none because we've had vacancy savings and other things to cover it, so we don't, we haven't used it.
What was spent during the year that was reimbursed, or that turned back in?
Yeah, I don't have, we could go back to past.
And I think, so there's a pledge that's different than the amount that's spent because, say for example, with the boat situation where the boat sunk at Beaver Dam. So we had some insurance money, but we didn't have enough to cover everything. So I pledge that money. So if you look at the pledge, I'm thinking 125 to 150. So, I pledge that money. So, if you look at the pledge, I'm thinking a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand?
A year.
But, right, but actually needed, the first thing, again, we would do is look at Parks and Rec's budget, and if they had vacancy savings that would make up, then none of the county administrator contingency actually goes to that. So, very little is ever actually spent. Um, but it has to be there as the safety net, and I would say that a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, um...
But does five hundred thousand have to be there?
No. I, I think that we are facing a little bit more questionable times. We, as, you recall, we've reduced our FMRR by three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars next year for what was asked for. So, just like we're concerned about the HVAC at Body Top, out of that three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that we're pushing back a year, it's possible that something would break and we have to address it. So, I would rather, since it's really not affecting the budget, it's just affecting, I mean, if, I, the way I'm understanding it, and I may be saying this wrong, but if you took that down, I don't think it's like giving you more money to spend on something else because we're not planning on spending it. It's really just a safety net.
That's, yeah, I was just gonna say, we have it in the budget right now as it's an offsetting. So, essentially, it could free up fund balance if you were looking to use fund balance for something else because that chunk of fund balance right now, we've assigned for this purpose, and I have fund bal, a fund balance number as well.
Ms. Steel, didn't your predecessor use some of his contingency on balancing the budget at one time, if I recall? A little bit of it, maybe. I can't remember.
I don't recall that.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a miniscule amount. So, each of us are given a certain amount of money for travel each year, correct? How much is that?
One hundred dollars.
Okay, so if I don't spend it, which I haven't spent any money since I've been on the board, could I say next year, could I allocate that travel fund to Bay aging?
I, I think if...
I'm just, I mean, that's, I know...
Before, um, discussing that, I would like to say that your miscellaneous supplies has gone over. So, while you may all, you all may not travel as much, there are other expenses that have gone over, and that balances because, you know, again, we look at the bottom line for that area.
I know, that's probably, that puts it in the budget, but...
I just wanted to update the, Dr. Worth, I didn't provide a number when you asked me about the fund balance. Um, but the fund balance, uh, to, that we have available right now, um, is six fifteen, six fifty-one to get to the sixteen percent. Remaining available to get to the sixteen percent would be six hundred fifteen thousand, six fifty-one. That's what we have. We're not at the sixteen percent yet. That would be how much more we would have if we were to take it down to sixteen percent. We have, yes.
Plus.
I apologize. We have more than sixteen percent reserved right now, and that number would take us to sixteen percent.
I'd really, Ms. Steel, or Ms. Callaway, between the two of you, I'd like to figure out what the county, um, administrator contingency fund needs to be.
At least it's a five-year workback.
How much we've actually spent during the year? Even if it was returned or however else, that you needed it during the year? Or the county administrator needed it during the year, regardless of how much was sent back?
'Cause what we do is we pledge it. We don't ever actually move the money. We just tell them, "You're covered," and tell them to try to be as conservative as they can on their budget and pay for it themselves.
So, Mr. Chair, are you suggesting that, let's say, it's only two hundred thousand, we can use the three hundred thousand for others or other things? Is that where you're going in that direction?
In my opinion, no. Because next year, regardless of what the amount is, next year, five hundred thousand of that has to go to the radio system payment that we're doing. So, we're using, and where was the other two sixty-three? That's strictly contingency fund, correct?
The two forty-seven that we used, yes, that is just strictly unassigned fund balance we needed to balance the budget.
That, to leave, so if we knock the county administrator contingent... Contingency fund back, we're still gonna be somewhat over that will have to be made up next year. And I don't like the idea of using fund balance to balance the budget. And, Ms. Callaway, I'm sure y'all have looked, but we're decreasing the amount for, um, social services, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And then this year, we had to make an adjustment and give them more money.
For children's services.
Children's services. How close do we think this number is?
The, this number was several meetings between Ms. Cursey, Ms. Lender, and myself where we just fine-tuned the personnel calculations. So, I think this is a very good number.
So, this, this number is strictly personnel?
This, yes, strictly personnel.
CSA is a different...
And this does not include any of the CSA, so that reduction is not, um, children's services at all.
And if I can, I think it's sort of like the memory coming back, when we, um, last year, there was a little bit of money left over, and to get to zero, the board said, "Just throw it in the CA contingency." So, the CA contingency this year is like two hundred and thirty-eight and some change. And I think originally, it had been two twenty-five or something, but you all did that at the end. Um, right now, to date, we have a hundred and eighty-four pledged. I don't think that in the past, it has been that high. I think, for the most part, it's been going like that, um, but at the, for the pledging. But again, we're able to recover that. So, um, however you all want to address it, I'm still getting a little hung up on, I mean, if it, it, thinking that those funds can be actually spent on something else because we are banking on them not actually being spent. And so, if you take it to three hundred, then, or whatever figure that you would like to use, we're still anticipating all of that money to, to not actually be spent. It's like you said, it's a balancing act.
But you need to have the money available throughout the year.
A, as part of, it's the fund balance revenue, so you're, you're earmarking part of your fund balance revenue if it's needed for that contingency.
Dr. Worth?
Yeah, back to revenues, so it's, so we are seeing an increase in the number of veterans that are coming to the commissioner asking for, um, tax relief for the real estate. Uh, we have also real estate relief for individuals that, um, have a certain income level, correct? So, we're pretty set on that number, correct? That's, that's pretty well set.
It's just late, it's just like looking at the sales tax. We've, we've made these adjustments through the budget process. We do have one correction I'd like to throw out there, about the sixteen percent.
Yes, I apologize. Looking at this worksheet, the, uh, two hundred forty-six thousand dollars, two forty-six nine eighty-four to two forty-seven was not reduced out of that number. So, what you actually have to get down to sixteen percent would be three hundred sixty-eight thousand. So, I apologize, but that's a correction.
Oh, goodness.
I know, I just, taken away.
So, so, getting back to the revenue, so that is for individuals for the real estate side. Now, we also give personal property tax relief to members of the fire rescue squad. And that, again, is a number that could change depending on what veh, types of vehicles they declare, correct? So, we don't really have a solid number until it starts coming into play in December, and, correct? So, you're, it's an adjustment that...
They've turned in applications. We know where we are now, but that doesn't mean somebody's not gonna buy a new vehicle. So, every year, that's something that's gonna...
And that's a number, again, that we should really watch carefully so we can see, you know, how that changes over time and gives you perhaps a better way of predicting where that should be in your budget.
Right. It's just like the, the sheet that Joanne provided, I'm sorry, the, the commissioner provided, um, showed us that on the elderly and disabled, that has not been growing the same way. It, that's become more stable. And again, you have, maybe somebody new goes on because of their age or their income level changes, but somebody else is going off. So, that's kind of fluid, um, coming and going. On the vets, it's been an increase, not only for Gloucester, but for everybody since that policy landed and people started taking advantage of it.
Mr. Chair, uh, Ms. Steel, that personal property for the veterans, I think that, is that just one vehicle per family?
Yes, and I think, well, you asked this question, and I believe it does not, it does not go to the spouse or anything, I think.
I think it's just one vehicle per family. I, I was talking to someone this weekend, and, in fact, they were, they were grateful for their real estate 'cause they're a hundred percent disabled. They're, they're grateful for the real estate, but they said the vehicle is only one per family.
Right, right.
I, I didn't realize we'd take into account, so I didn't realize the veterans get a relief for personal property tax, too. It just, okay, so it's one vehicle.
Well, as active duty military, there's an exemption there as well.
Yeah, that's a state thing, too, because of where they're moving to and from in different localities and all. So, but those figures, again, haven't been growing by too much. It's pretty stationary.
Where was that two forty-seven that you were...
It, so the seven forty-six nine eighty-four that you see here on your screen, that's made up of the five hundred thousand that we met, discussed, and then a two forty-six that was, two forty-six eight nine eighty-four that was just needed to balance the budget. So, those are both unassigned fund balance numbers. And I had just, and the number I just provided had not taken that number off of it to tell you the remaining fund balance.
Okay.
So, gentlemen, I, I, this is interesting statistics. So, we're, our budget is what, eighty-five million? Is that what we're looking at, somewhere around there? So, we're dealing with point three perc, point, well, let's see, three hundred percent? The money, the...
Three hundred percent.
The amount of money that we're trying to deal with is such a small amount compared to the overall budget. It's really small. And, you know, most of our budget is dealing with, you know, the revenue versus expenditures that have little to deal with. And so, I know we're playing around with, you know, a few dollars here, a few dollars there, but it's, it's miniscule compared to the size of our budget.
And we do wanna remind you, too, when the budget, in the process, as it goes forward, you're gonna see the, uh, carryover funds still come in. So, the people, the, the carryover funds are not included here, and so the, the number's gonna go up, but it's not anything new other than the carryover from this year that is not being spent. The schools have, uh, a special account that they, um, I, I can't, when they, they gave them the all-in money. They gave them three years' worth of money in one year, but they can't, you know, so they've got year two, year three, has to be carried over. Next year, we'll be carrying over another third. So, there's things like that. Just don't want anybody, especially the audience, to say, "How did the budget go from eighty-five to blank, blank?" And it's because of the carryover, which we will have a sheet like this that will explain everything.
Yeah, and remember, in the past years, when we've advertised a budget with an increase in taxes, we've been able to play with that spreadsheet. Since we agreed to not increase the tax, we have no way of playing around with the budget because it's at fifty-eight-three, period. And so, we don't have any opportunity to manipulate the budget the way we have in our spreadsheets before. Well, we have, well, we have a where.
I'm waiting to see if anybody else has anything to say. Okay, right now, we've got a meeting scheduled for, tentatively scheduled for Thursday night, the eleventh. We have a proposed, uh, budget passing on the fifteenth. We have a work session scheduled for the sixteenth. And as of right now, potentially, the only thing that is on that agenda is a closed session.
Why don't we have a closed session on the fifteenth?
Well, let's back up. Or we have the next meeting after that would be May seventh, correct? May seventh. We won't have, I mean, potentially, we could have more information from the governor Thursday to have that meeting. I definitely think we need to cancel the meeting on the fifteenth and not pass the budget. The earliest we should pass the budget would be the sixteenth and potentially even save it till May seventh. That's my thought on it. That way, we have a better understanding of what we're gonna get from the state and other funding. So, yeah, unlike you.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with what you're, you're talking about. I, honestly, at this point, um, not knowing what the governor's gonna do, and we already have a meeting scheduled for the sixteenth, why don't we make the sixteenth a budget work session if we have info from the government, governor? Then if not, we just hold our closed meeting and we, we leave and we pass the budget or we adopt the budget on the seventh, like you said.
Is the closed session needed on the, or can it wait?
It, it can wait, but I think it, it would probably be easier, I would anticipate that there's gonna be a fair amount of discussion, so having it on a crowded agenda on another night might not be the best thing. The other thing I'd like to say, as far as waiting until the first week in May, um, I, I know the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue are, you know, concerned about how long the, to get the books ready and then, um, to get the, the bills out. I think the treasurer prefers to give people thirty days' notice, and it takes a little bit of time. So, I think if the board understands, and the public would need to understand, that if we wait until May to adopt the budget, there will not be as long for people from the time they get their bill to when that bill is due.
But we have in the past extended the date at which the monies can be delivered to the county, correct?
But they were under extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, I think that, nobody'd be going down a path of making people feel like, "Oh, I can just be late any year," and then all of a sudden, we stop doing that, and then they're, it's a, you know, getting the penalty, so...
I, I can go either way.
And I don't know that you need to decide that tonight. If you go with the plan of keeping the sixteenth, then you can have, uh, a budget work session and the closed meeting and, um, you know, strategize.
It is kind of important because we need to advertise when we're going to pass the budget. 'Cause right now, it's currently, um, advertised for the fifteenth.
Right.
Do we need to advertise it for the sixteenth, Ms. Crown?
If we cancel the meeting on the fifteenth and when we post the meeting for the sixteenth, if you want the budget adoption items to be on that agenda, that, that would be posted that way.
But if, but if we just use it as budget discussion, it wouldn't be for budget adoption on the sixteenth?
If you put it for budget adoption and then you choose not to, because is there any negative consequences to say, "Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to pass it tonight"?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
When, when does the school system have to pass theirs?
May fifteenth.
So, Mr. Chair, under your proposal...
So, Mr. Chair, under your proposal, we would not meet this Thursday or Monday, we'd meet on Tuesday.
And with our meeting on the seventh, their meeting would be the fourteenth, so they'd have a whole extra like thirty-six hours to pass their budget, Mr. Smith.
Just making sure.
Mr. Gibson, no Thursday, no.
Do y'all see, do you see a need for Thursdays?
No.
No, not only, I mean, do you see a need for the fifteenth? Okay, so the next meeting with potential budget adoption will be on the sixteenth. And then we'll leave it open from there. And if we have to, we can always add, if we wanted to be nice to the school board, if we could move the budget adoption to, when are you back? When do you leave? So. So that, that's where we're looking at. We could potentially change the budget adoption request, add a meeting to have budget adoption other than the seventh, but Dr. Worth wouldn't be here.
The other thing is, if the governor takes action and we know by Friday, then I, I don't see a problem with us passing the budget next Tuesday. I mean, I would love to find a way to be able to do everything that we have to do and, and fund getting this firehouse built. But I don't like the, I don't like the pressure that we already have on our budget. Now, it's just adding a lot more at the moment with, with us having the study out there. But I think if the governor takes action, that we can absolutely pass this budget next Tuesday.
Did, Mr. Chair, just put it possible bu- budget adoption for the sixteen.
Right.
Yeah.
It's possible. Put, put the word possible, or possible, depending on, um, the state legislator ac- action. I don't know.
Potentially. Okay, any more discussion on the budget tonight? Ms. Cronin.
I apologize, I don't normally speak in meetings, but, so for the preparation for the meeting on the sixteenth as potential budget adoption, do you want the resolutions prepared by finance to be based on the way that the budget is currently? And then any modifications?
I don't think there's much we can do.
Did you change it tonight?
Yes. They did. Yes. And one thousand three sixty-four to balance.
Thank you.
We'll give that to the county administrator.
Well, Ms. Callaway's the boss.
Ms. Callaway?
The one thousand three sixty-four, do you have a, do you, previously, we had had that under vacancy savings, just to use less vacancy savings in the budget? Is that acceptable?
I mean, whatever's the easiest and cleanest at this point. It's a whole lot easier to do if you don't have any money.
So you should have a vote to cancel the meetings that you've scheduled and to change the, the potential budget adoption to the sixteenth of April.
All right. Miss Steel, by vote, by roll call? Mr. Willmott, roll call?
That works.
Miss Steel.
Doctor Worth.
Can the parliamentarian make, make the motion?
He made the motion.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made, I'm sorry. I did. Okay.
He framed it for me and I just said, so moved. So I didn't have to repeat it.
Okay, so Doctor Worth was the, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion on the budget tonight? Only have one other item?
Second.
All in favor?
We gotta slip these lawyers.